All right, I'd like to call this regular board meeting of the Hicksville Exempt Village School Board to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Ms. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mr. Ayden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
And Mr. Methben?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you. Welcome our visitor. We're always glad to have you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, principal reports. Jeff, you get to start tonight.
All right, excellent. Turn this little doohickey on here. All right, of course, past events, just hit the big one here, homecoming. I always say that homecoming is the end of our honeymoon period at the school. Once that comes and goes, the reality of being a school principal and teacher sets into the high school side. But we always want to thank our students, our families, and our community members and parents for everything they do for homecoming because it is a community event and it's one of our bigger events for our district. It was a great, great time. It was a big victory over Ayersville, which was always nice. And then, of course, the homecoming dance was held on Saturday, excuse me, Saturday, September 21st. And again, it was a great event, no problems at all, so that always makes it extra exciting. You know, we talk about our principal reports and we're trying to do a better job of not double-dipping and repeating. This month, I'm kind of going to go over some things that deal more with legislation and things that I'm involved in. And Mr. Countryman, as ironic, asked me the other day, he's like, you know, Jeff, what bogs you down daily in your job? You know, what do you do all day long when it's not discipline or things like that? And I said, honestly, I go, people would be amazed, I deal more with outside entities than I do internal at times. I mean, I deal with OHSA, ODE, the IEC, you know, the ESC, you know, the OASAA, and it just goes on and on and on and on sometimes. So when I went down to Columbus last week for my legislative meeting, I am a representative of Zone 4, and we kind of go together with the rest of the state. There's roughly 20 high school principals that work together, and we provide different legislative items to present down in Columbus and hope that they will listen to us occasionally and maybe make some changes that will benefit our schools. And some hot topic items I think are important to discuss, you know, we keep talking about the school report card and these expectations, and you know, I think people tend to forget that, you know, one thing we're fighting for is the idea that, you know, if you're a community school or a private school or charter school, we want them to be held to the same standard as us, you know? And they're not, and yet they're receiving some funding, whether it's through vouchers or other state monies that are going their way. So that's one thing that we're really pushing is being held to the same standard. Another item, of course, is graduation rates, which we've been discussing, and I know last time we met, I talked a little bit about our Prepare for Success score and our graduation rate. One thing we're pushing for is, you know, if a student drops out and gets their GED and passes the test, we feel that they should not be held to a standard of being a dropout, which counts against our graduation rate. If they drop out, pass their GED test, that should not count against us, so we're proposing that. Also, alternatively assess students, year five students, year six students. We have kids, we're required by the state to educate students up to the age of 21, and we do have some students that participate in these work programs after they graduate from high school, and we keep them until they're 21. Well, every year, they count against our graduation rate. So they stay year five, they count against us. They stay year six, they count against us again. So we're also discussing that with them and trying to get them to drop that, I don't know, it's just asinine, I guess, I don't know how else to say it, but it drives us crazy. But those do count against us, and we're doing what's right for them. We're doing what's best for them as individuals, yet it counts against our graduation rate. IEP student exemptions, this was a hot topic item last year. Originally, they told us, you know, if your student's on an IEP, you know, they need to take the test at least once, you can exempt them from that tested area, and then they will receive three points towards their 18 total points and they will graduate. Well, then, after we sat down and had all these IEP meetings with all these parents, they came back and said, oh, wait a minute, no, you know what, we're going to change that. If they're exempted, they're not going to graduate from your school, which sent us all into a big tizzy. So then, we started arguing that with the state. Well, we've noticed the state really hasn't said much lately, and there's two reasons why. Reason number one is they changed the law. They said, you know what, they will not count against your graduation rate. Well, they kind of changed the law. It only doesn't count against our local report card. It still counts against our state report that we have to send in through EMIS and our federal report, which affects funding. And at our last meeting, it was funny because we were like, well, why isn't this being discussed? And we were told that the ODE has been told not to talk about it anymore, but it still counts that way. So that was an interesting discussion to have, so pretty much that's gone away because, you know, most people and their constituents in their districts, they're more focused on the local report card like you guys are, you know? And they're saying, okay, it counts as they graduate for you guys, but still, I will tell you this, our EMIS reporting to the state and federal government, those students are counted as non-graduates. But again, it's not a topic of discussion anymore because I would assume that that's not, would not be well received by any parent of an IEP student if they found that out. Tracking graduation pathways, we're still trying to figure out how to do that. As you guys know, they've been on the board for a while. I believe this is the seventh consecutive year that the graduation tracking progress has changed. There's actually nine different ways to graduate now. We're working with Mr. Josh Clark, who is our ESC rep, and Brian City Schools, who has a, they have a larger admin team, and they have people in place that can focus strictly on creating these local seals. Once we create our local seals, which we're going to kind of work with Brian on that piece, so thank you, Brian, then we will be able to accept the state mandated seals for graduation. Now, what does that mean? Pretty much, the class of 2023, which are current freshmen, their graduation is set up based on, you know, you could be, you could receive a diploma based on your ability to take the ELA 2 and the Algebra I test, and if you do well on those and show competency, that's part of your graduation plan. Now, you have to do the credits that are required, the hours that are required, all that kind of fun stuff. But let's imagine you don't score well on those two tests. They're still offering all the other tests, by the way, except for ELA 1. You can earn a seal by scoring well on the government test and the history test. So those are seals that are provided by ODE. You could receive a seal based on community service, which is something that we have to develop. It's kind of, I don't know what to say right now about it, but again, it's more in development than anything. The interesting part is, we need to get this under control by the end of this school year because technically, any student as the class of 21 or 22 has the option to choose to graduate under the 23 options, if they like. But the class of 2023 has to go by the class of 2023 options. So anyway, we're trying to work through all that stuff, and it'll be fine. Well, you know, it is what it is, and like I said, hopefully, there's a light at the end of the tunnel and things start to, I guess, calm down and we find one way to graduate. One other thing we requested as a legislative group is a larger state testing window. Right now, our state testing window for the end-of-course assessment starts end of March and it goes through the first week of May. We actually are going to our legislators and saying, hey, it'd be great if you guys would open it up maybe April 1st and give us to like the second week of May, or second week of June, excuse me. That way, a school like Hicksville, you know, we can move all our tests to the end of the year, like exams, and of course, exams, and of course, you know, and move it to the end, have a few extra days at the end to do the retakes, and of course, the accountability piece for our students, you know, the necessity to be here for attendance purposes. In a way, I mean, it's a win-win, in my opinion, especially with them all being online now. It's not like, you know, we're ordering these paper tests and having to ship them all back. I mean, literally, we just log in, sign them up, take them. Most of the tests, except for the ELA, are all graded almost immediately, so again, it just makes sense. So we're hoping, that, you know, it'd be amazing to actually have eight months of the school year to prepare our kids for the test instead of five and a half or six months. So that'd be nice, too. We're also requesting the elimination of reassessment penalties. There still are some students that do the retakes and we are penalized, and when I say penalized, they've kind of fixed it because the first couple of years, I believe, you know, if Johnny did not do well on his ELA 1 test and he had to retake it, that second time he took the test, it counted against your large group of students. So if I took ELA 1 as a freshman and got a 1 on that test, which is not good, as a sophomore, I retake it. That test, again, you're taking someone who's already failed it once and adding it to all the new people taking the test, chances are, they're going to fail it again. So you're kind of increasing the number of failures each year. They changed that a couple of years ago and made it to where they created a new indicator to where anyone who does retake a test, they're in their own indicator group, and the percentage was much lower to meet that requirement. So they've kind of made a step in the right direction, but schools are still requesting, hey, you know what, they've taken it once, it's still kind of, you know, penalizing us. It'd be great if, again, we didn't get double-dipped twice and get penalized twice by a lot of these kids. So we're working on that, and then, of course, the last big item, which is kind of funny because I always say this, I never get phone calls about the state report card or academics unless it's my father. Typically, phone calls I deal with are with sports. Foreign exchange students, there's actually something passed by state legislators, and it's not OHSA, OHSA fought this, but lost. The F1 visa, any student that receives an F1 visa is now able to compete in high school sports for as long as they want, which in past years, they got one year of eligibility, now they get four years. And as soon as that passed, I'll give you a perfect example of what's going to happen. There's a private school over, I believe it was in, gosh, I'm going to get this wrong, Sweden, where their entire girls' golf team came and visited a school in northeast Ohio, and literally, this entire golf team, which is a golf academy in like Sweden, is probably going to come to Ohio, and then they're going to go four years of high school in Ohio, compete in ROHSA events, probably totally dominate. And they're worried mostly about golf, soccer, volleyball, those three sports are the ones that really stand out, and they said basketball won't be far behind. So again, they're still fighting that, but just another interesting topic. Outside of that, you know, we are preparing for end-of-course fall retakes. Fall sports season is winding down. We've had a lot of individuals that have competed well, a lot of team success, still two weeks left in the football season. We've been mathematically eliminated from the playoffs, but we had a great win Friday night, and hopefully, we get two more wins and have a great season this year. And of course, the end of the first quarter is this Friday, we're fourth of the way through the year almost. It's absolutely insane, I cannot believe that. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Andy?
All right. We talked a lot about our report card last one, and last board meeting, and we did it outstanding. And I've actually had a lot of different schools who've reached out to us specifically about our middle school math department. Those scores, not just last year, but for the last three, four, or five years, have been on top of the world. So on September 26th, I decided, instead of having all these different schools come out at different times, we held a middle school math PD day here. And five or six different schools came and had their staff members represented with the opportunity to talk with Mr. Altman, Mrs. Taylor, and then their co-teachers, Mrs. Kelly Van Horn and Mrs. Andrea Deal. So they came out for the entire day, they watched the teachers teach, they had an opportunity to work with them, to watch their labs, to watch, come in during their conference, a lot of positive feedback from that. And I think, again, it's a positive way of just showing what some of our teachers are doing here on a consistent basis, and we've got some good ones. So congratulations to those teachers again. Mr. Slattery talked about the sports season coming to an end. It's hard to believe it, but middle school sports is also wrapping up. We have one more football game, middle school football game tomorrow night. Hopefully, we can get our first one of the season, and then we are also done for the fall. The big thing here is, I guess, what I wanted to say is, middle school athletes, we need you to come out and play sports and do activities, you know, it's your guys' school, it's your opportunity to embrace this and to make this what you want it to be. So as winter sports come around and coaches try to talk you into playing, as Mr. Hunter comes around and tries to talk you into playing, please, 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 consider it for your classmates, consider it for your school, you know, it's something that you guys can do and look back on and enjoy. So get ready for winter sports because hopefully, we're going to come back and have a great season. One area on our report card that we've struggled with is our gifted section. Gifted is something that we're never probably going to be able to hit, just based on purely the size of our school and what some of our student population is. That being said, that doesn't mean we're not working hard at it and trying to figure out ways to improve our gifted scores. So Mr. Clark, our ESC rep, is leading a book study on exceptional children. They all have the opportunity to read one of three different books that we've kind of chosen for them, and we're looking into using some of our high schools' workforce money to purchase for them. And basically, we're trying to get PD hours for our teachers that are specifically focused on how we can better help our gifted students, and again, that check mark on the report card. Veterans Day, we are once again hosting our Veterans Day Assembly on November 11th. We actually have two separate assemblies, a K-4 and then a 512 assembly. Any veteran, current or past service member that would like to attend, please contact one of the offices, RSVP, because we do survey breakfast, and we need to have an idea of how many people will be coming to that. The last thing I did want to just kind of touch on is, we're constantly getting new programming here at school, and some of it's by choice and some of it's, you know, shoved down our throats by the State of Ohio PBS is one that's, the elementary is really working on, and will eventually work its way to the middle school and high school. And so one of the things that we did during our teacher workday that I think was really valuable is, we said, let's have a program audit. You know, we do a lot of different things, but what do we do well? What overlaps each other? What do we need to get rid of because it's run its course? And we had a lot of great discussions at the high school level, the elementary level, and the middle school level, and just kind of said, you know what, some of the stuff, we're already doing it, we're just doing it in a different place. Or, you know what, why are we doubling up this? We're finding a better way to do it over here and meet these kids' needs. So we had a lot of really good discussions, and those have kind of carried on to, for me, our building meetings and having discussions of what programming we're offering, what can we possibly get rid of, and what's coming down the pipe that we're going to add. Well, we haven't made a lot of decisions yet, we've had a lot of good conversations, and I just kind of wanted to put that out there because maybe we may get rid of something that we're currently doing, and the reason is not that it's not a good program or it hasn't helped us, it's that we found a different way to do it, and we don't want to do 500 things okay, we want to do a handful of things very well. And so that's kind of what we're looking at and continuing to have discussions as building level. So I just wanted to let you know that, and I think that's all I have.
All right. Kirsten?
Thanks. Well, we are going strong with the middle school musical rehearsals. I am helping Ms. Rodish with the musical. This year, we have 40-plus extremely talented young men and women that are participating in it. Very happy with our work so far. Tickets will be available to be purchased actually online, something new this year, starting in early November, so information will be coming out on that. And the show is at the Huber, November 22nd through the 24th. Tomorrow, we start our third grade fall state testing. Because of the third grade guarantee, no matter if these students do pass, in the fall, they are required to retake the state test in the spring. The students have to earn a 683 or higher, along with a reading sub-score of 46, in order to be promoted to fourth grade reading. Each year, that passing score gets a little higher, by about four points. The third grade guarantee also requires us to identify our students that are on track and off track, and if they're considered off-track through our STAR testing, then we do put them on a RIMP, which stands for Reading Improvement and Monitoring Plan, and this is discussed with parents over parent-teacher conferences. This allows us to be able to utilize our title teachers to be able to pull these students out and do either small group or one-on-one interventions with them. And the goal is to identify, you know, a large number in kindergarten, and each year, that number will go down, and I'm happy to report that we, again, have gone down. So if we've identified 24 students in, you know, kindergarten, our hopes is to make it, you know, 15 or less, you know, like the next year. And so we did, and that does play a big part in our K-3 reading portion of our state report card. So tomorrow, we have testing, and on Thursday for ELA. And lastly, our first principal math club is November 1st, so.
Rolls around, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
So on that day, parents will get to come?
Parents of the students that are participating in the math club, yes. And so they get a letter as soon as they make it, and they take it home, and parents always show up on that day, so, yes. Parents will be invited that day.
All right, Four County Career. Denny sent me his message, if I can get it up here. Okay. Four County September update. The meeting was held at Arc Solutions. The board is periodically touring manufacturing facilities to better understand the needs of the employers. After the tour, they conducted the monthly meeting. There are no real updates concerning the school, operational costs, how the school district is doing overall. They continue to have success on most of those levels. On Monday, they attended the Wall of Fame Dinner. I don't know exactly what that is. And they had their semi-annual advisory committee meetings. Their regular meeting then was that week. So that was Denny's report to us. Superintendent's report.
Yep. I attended, talking about meetings here, I attended the NBHP and the NBEC monthly meetings, and also the monthly superintendent meeting, and I say that just so that everybody knows that there's monthly meetings every month that I go to. I sit on the board for the NBHP, the Northern Baka Health Plan Committee, and the Northern Baka Education Committee, and those are two monthly meetings that I go to. The NBEC is through Newalka, just so you know. And then the NBHP, of course, is our insurance. Then our monthly superintendent meeting is the county superintendents from six counties, and we get together and discuss hot topics or updates that we need to know. There's a representative that comes from the state each month and informs us on different things that we need to know as well. I also attended, I spoke about this at the last board meeting, that I was going to go to a Bassa report card meeting in Columbus. I did that last Thursday. It was great. It's the first one that we've had. Topics that we discussed there were graduation requirements that Jeff's already kind of talked about. We also talked about performance index, letter grade cut scores, performance index calculation for performance levels, adding test retake indicator, gifted indicator, use of the A-to-F report card labels or ratings, and the K-through-three literacy. And there's issues in each one of those that we feel the superintendents need to be addressed, and so we're not just saying, hey, you know, fix this. We're sitting there and trying to come up with recommendations that they can then take. There's a group of three superintendents that then go on to a legislative meeting and share our concerns with the legislators in hopes of getting it, you know, looked at and making it better for the schools. Often, not always, but often, the people that make those decisions in Columbus aren't educators, and so they really don't know what they're talking about when they make those rules. So we're trying to ease our way in and be, you know, good about it and just be a voice from the educational committee. So we, I have two more that I'll be going to throughout the year. One of them will most likely be next month because they want to meet again before they meet, before the legislative meeting in December. I also had mentioned to you via email that the NRA, the National Rifle Association grant, that we did receive that, that's in the amount of $7,775, and I'll report more on that next month, once that's installed. But basically, just so people know, it's a film that will be going on all of the doors of our glass doors, exterior doors.
Shatterproof?
Shatterproof film, yes. And then, speaking of Denny and Four County, so Denny's term is up for Four County. So we need to either appoint a new representative to serve on that board. I did reach out to Denny and talk to him about that, and he indicated to me that, you know, I told him that we love having him do it because he's perfect for it. I mean, he went to school there, he has a passion for it, he does a great job with it, and he doesn't need to come to our meetings then, his reporting to you works out well for us. But he said that he did not want to step on anybody's toes, that there's anybody on the board that wants to do it, he wants you to, you know, just go ahead and do that. If none of you want to, he would be willing to serve another term. So I told him I would run that by all of you, and...
That's at the end of the year, though, isn't it? Isn't that when the term's up, in January?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So if there is someone, if you want to think about it, or if there is someone, but I need to let Tim know, the superintendent at Four County.
I'd say, let him do another two years personally.
Is it three years?
Three years.
And I am totally agree with you.
You know, I really consider doing it, and there's a lot of, I would enjoy doing it, but it's just, I mean, a whole nother meeting a month, and it's just, it's just too much for me to, you know, to tackle that. So if he's willing to do it, and nobody else has got an objection, I have no issue with that.
I love that he has the manufacturing experience besides the Four County knowledge. You know, I think he's a perfect fit for what they're wanting to do. I love that he's even willing to do that for us.
He has connections to help.
So do we have to vote on that?
No, we don't have to vote on it. Tim emailed me today, today or yesterday, and he did indicate that there were six spots open. So he was hoping that Denny would do it again so that he'd have someone on there for consistency.
Consistency.
Yeah. But, you know, Denny wants me to make sure that you guys know that he doesn't want to step on anybody's toes. He will do it for another term if you guys want him to.
Awesome.
So...
So we don't need to vote on it, though?
No.
I think we probably would vote when we did our yearly meeting at the end.
At the end.
In January, when we appoint, okay.
But at this point, we don't plan to make any changes?
Good. So you'll contact him that we are in favor of him doing that?
I'll let Denny know if you're all good with that, yeah? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the following consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, Steph Galen. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methben?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Ayden?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carried, five to zero. May I have a motion to approve minutes and financials?
I'll move.
Jen, thank you.
I'll second.
Craig, thanks. Minutes for the regular board meeting on September 16th, 2019. Recommend to waive the reading of the board minutes unless otherwise stated. Treasurers' report. Cash reconciliations as of September 2019. Financial statements for September 2019. Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2020 as presented. Total general fund resources of $13,329,157.45, and total resources for all funds of $20,97,125.1 cents. Approve the fiscal year 2020 amended permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $10,811,466.23, and total appropriations for all funds of $14,506,900.52. Approve sixth grade camp purpose statement and budget for fiscal year 2020 as presented. Approve the following then-and-now certificates. Vendor Cotterman &amp; Company upgrade to the 20-year roof warranty, $35,990.10. Two for Gordon Foods for food and supplies, one, $3,112.63. Second one, $3,081.63. Justin's for the 2019 yearbook, $6,866.43. Final forms for fiscal year 2020 online registrations, $5,671.50. Accept the following donations. $100 from Lifeline Connect Baptist Church for girls' basketball. $100 from Bobby Jean Iyers for girls' basketball. $300 from Dr. Robert and Janet Ramus for this team. $1,000 from Ohio State Eagles for 10,000 shot club. Mike, any comments or things about fiscal, financial things?
Not that, that was been mentioned there, unless you have questions. I did want to add that the auditor state's office was in today. They are doing an STRS audit. It is kind of randomly selected throughout the state, and this is our year. It's $410 was the agreement for each, 410 for SRS, 410 for STRS. The auditor was in today. At the end of the day, he came to me and said that everything looked good. He will be sending on his work to his supervisor for review. So if it continues to be good, I'm hopeful that the cost will come in underneath the estimate. But so far, so good with that. We are, we, also, we received an extension for filing what's called the Hinkle Report, so it'll be the financial statements to the auditor state's office. That is due this coming Monday, October 28th. Information has been submitted to Sammy Stom... Information has been submitted to Sammy Stom. He's the CPA that does our conversion. So he has thrown questions back at me, but we should be in line to have that done by the 28th. The auditors then will be coming back to us at some point in time to do the audit of Hicksville's schools books. So kind of update on those things there. Like I said, if anybody's got any questions on the items mentioned, I'll be happy to respond.
Okay, I called Mike today and asked, I wondered about the money that was paid to Cotterman and Company on the roof warranty, if that could possibly be taken out of our PI money, permanent improvement money, rather than the general budget. You want to share?
Well, yeah, we currently have about $160,000 in the PI, permanent improvement fund. We will get monies, real estate monies in the spring. I believe that total was, maybe it's about $90,000. So that would put us at about a quarter million dollars. There's currently really very little of anything that is as encumbered out of the PI fund. Last year, 50,000 was transferred out of there and put into a general fund for bus purchases. Of course, a bus is between about 90 and 100,000 to buy one, so we've got 50,000 setting in that general fund bus count right now. And I believe the idea is to buy one bus later this year?
Plan is every other year is our plan.
Next year.
Yeah, so after.
Okay, next year.
So we have 50,000 in the account right now. So then, when the fiscal year ends, 50,000 comes in and then you would get it, what, I mean, you probably order whatever you wanted, like before school started, is that the plan? So.
We can probably get it over the summer and pay for it after July 1st.
So as far as, is, I don't know what the history is of how we spent money out of there, but a permanent improvement fund would be, the roof would be a project that we could use. So right now, it has been spent out of the general fund. If the board wishes to have it come out of the permanent improvement fund, I would request a motion to do that so that we have a, it's memorialized what the board's wishes and intents are, intent is, and then I'll just do a reclassification of that expenditure. If not, then we'll just leave it right where it's at.
I think we should take it out of the PI funds personally. I mean, we rarely draw from that fund other than like the buses.
Textbooks.
Historically, we've never taken a lot of money out of that.
We've never, never really talked about it. And I think this is, I think this is perfect for, for that account.
I think so, too. There's less restrictions on general fund versus PI. And when we can use that PI funds, I think we ought to draw from there personally.
Any other discussion about that? What do you think?
I'm not opposed. I, I have no. Does it matter in the end?
Only that it's general.
Yes, I know.
Asking him, thank you. He knows. Thank you.
My answer would be somewhat similar to his. I mean, it's, it's all the district's dollars. And the general fund can be used to make any expenditure. So it could definitely be used out of there. The PI is designed for items that are like this, so.
So it boils down to where you want to be more flexible, right? If you want, if you want more liquidity in a general operating fund, then take it from the PI fund. Is that, was that the benefit that we're getting at?
Yeah, and then, I mean, we've got to, I mean, I guess from my perspective, my look at it, we've got an upcoming project that in theory, if we're shy of funds somewhere else, we could use some funds out of the PI. So it becomes kind of, maybe it's a bad term, but a shell game, where do you want to take it from? Obviously, we've got money that's been set aside for the upcoming building project. That's not enough to cover everything that we're planning on doing. But some, of course, we got an income tax that's going to be coming on that we want to use for that, which will be put into, I think it's designed to be put into the general fund. But to then go towards, you know, that project. So if it's a timing of issue, timing of things, you know, we could use PI, but PI can be used, it's, I guess from my perspective, it's how the board wishes to proceed forward with this.
With the upcoming project, which gives us the most flexibility, which would be the more conservative route to take, you think?
Well, I think the flexibility is the same either way. You know, so I think whether it's taken out of the PI now, this is, the roof is out of the PI or on the general fund, it's kind of six of one, half dozen the other, I think.
I think when we set our yearly budget and we talk about our deficit spending, that's assuming that a lot of the projects are coming out of the PI fund and not out of the general fund. So I guess from that standpoint, you're right. In a lot of cases, it doesn't matter that much because we do have the building project coming up. We can take it from there. I just know with the general operating fund, it's just a lot more flexible. We can do whatever we want. With the PI, there's some stipulations, you know? But I mean, you're right, I mean, whether we use it now or we use it later, but this does impact our, our, you know, year end, where it was something that wasn't planned in our budgeting process. So.
So do we want to reclassify it or do we want to leave it out of the general budget?
I'm for reclassifying it.
So do we want to make a motion to approve what's there, then we could?
And then we'll reclassify.
Then, then it could be a motion to.
Okay, yes. All right, so were there any other discussion about the minutes and financials? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes. The motion carried five to zero. Okay, do I have a motion to reclassify the roof payment from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Craig and Jen, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Give me just a moment, please.
You're fine. I only have to fill in blanks, you have to write everything.
So the motion was made by Craig, correct?
Uh huh, yes, seconded by Jen.
Okay. Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes. The motion carried five to zero to reclassify that money. All right. May I have a motion for the employment of certified staff?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, Jen and then Galen, seconded, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2019-2020 school year. Dave Blue, head girls' track coach. Andrew Lawrence, head softball coach. Paul Payne, head boys' track coach. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes. The motion carried five to zero. I need a motion for employment of certified staff.
I'll move.
Craig?
Second.
Seconded by Galen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2019-2020 school year. Tim Shock, head baseball coach. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Absteed.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes. The motion carried four to zero with one abstention. May I have a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
Steph? Jen, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2019-2020 school year. John Hagerty, girls' mini aces basketball coach. Corey Johnsonbaugh, math stat advisor. Jeff Ruoff, mini aces wrestling coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2019-2020 school year. Natalie Briski, girls' basketball. Robert Bailey Tier, boys' basketball. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes. The motion carried five to zero. May I have a motion to approve other business?
I'll move.
Jen?
I'll second.
Craig, thanks. Recommend to authorize the superintendent to grant approval for teams involved in overnight state tournaments for fall, winter, and spring sporting events. Recommend to approve the wrestling team to attend the following overnight match, January 24th to January 25th, 2020 at Lima. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies. 0147, compensation. 1310, employment of the treasurer. 1340, non-reemployment of the treasurer. 1615, use of tobacco by administrators. 2431, interscholastic athletics. 3215, use of tobacco by professional staff. 4215, use of tobacco by classified staff. 5113.02, school choice options. 5200, attendance. 5350, student mental health and suicide prevention. 5460, graduation requirements. The next one was the wrong number. Don't even bet, caught it. It's 5512, use of tobacco.
Typo.
Yeah, 5512. 7300, disposition of real property, personal property. 7434, use of tobacco on school premises. 8462, student abuse and neglect. 8500, food services. Any discussion?
So.
We're opposed to tobacco.
We're truly opposed to tobacco. Do we highlight that with staff? I mean, just as a reminder at any point, like when any kind of policy changes, some of these policy changes are not necessarily like a day-to-day for the staff.
They have access to all of the board policies, all the board agendas as well.
Well, I realize we all have access to the policies, but.
Do they read it? Probably not.
Or do you, in your updates, can you?
Starting the school year, a big ones that we want to.
Just, you know, when things change or, you know, okay.
But like now, like your next meeting or something, if you'd update, if there's anything, yeah, most of them are not, but, yeah. We don't even have a show choir.
I could send them all out, too.
We don't even have show choir. That was the one, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Okay, any old business?
Mr. Slattery? Hall of Fame, we, I know we talked about that last time and I know I got your text today and I didn't know if maybe we would.
That's going to be part of our discussion in our next meeting.
I'd say Jay sent me a text the other day and was asking, you know, where we're at on it.
I picked up some information on some ideas. I don't have the cost, but some ideas of how you brought up about who to monitor. So again, not to bore everybody, but you know, the Hall of Fame is kind of a hot topic item with some people in our district about recognizing some of our athletes and potentially staff, new members here at the school. So that's one of our topic items for our meeting Thursday. Okay.
Who's in charge of athletic boosters?
That's a great question.
It wasn't meant to be tricked.
You know, it's been interesting the last couple of years. I know Jack Shock and Nancy have been in charge of it pretty much by themselves. And now I know Craig and I, we've met and discussed before, and we've got a few other people, including Jeff Hall of Meyer, Tony Slattery, and Pete Monroe, and we're all meeting Thursday. So it's gone from just us kind of meeting to we've got a group of five or six guys who are going to try to reestablish athletic boosters in the process of providing funds to our teams. And then, of course, you know, big projects like the Hall of Fame and things like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're getting there. And Jack is still involved. I believe he'll be at the meeting on Thursday with us. We have a chat about Jack and all his years of service and everything he's done for our kids, so.
Okay.
The building update, where we're at, we haven't had any committee meetings here lately, but the architects are working on renderings and proposed prices that they will present to us at our next committee meeting, which is November 7th, I believe.
I think that's right.
On a Thursday at noon. So that's where we're at with the building process right now. Rod is preparing all that stuff for that upcoming meeting in November.
And I assume that nothing's changed, the road is still going to be part of the entire project, it's supposed to separate.
Right, it's too late for the road, yeah, for the year because of the weather and.
Well, I think, you know, you make the point of you're going to be hauling all this stuff in there, boy, you don't want to be hauling all that in on a brand-new road. I mean, that wouldn't make, end up damaging it.
It really makes more sense, I think, in the long run, too, so.
And hopefully a better price.
And we've survived this long, so. It really is better, the traffic out here already with the different dismissal that we're doing is better in the afternoon.
I have a question. Have you gotten anywhere on working on getting a visit for us to the?
Four County and to the IEC. Yeah, are you guys going to be available during the day?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
You want me just to pick a day and set it up, like a month in advance? I give you a month so that you can see if you can make arrangements that work or?
Is that something maybe in the next board meeting, you could bring maybe one or two dates and we could all kind of chat and figure out what might work best?
Early the week of Thanksgiving week, that would work well. Monday or Tuesday of that week.
Do you not have school those days?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I'm just saying I won't be able to go otherwise, but if we could do it, then that would work out very well.
I second that.
I couldn't do Tuesday.
Oh, you are, Galen? Okay.
I couldn't do Tuesday, but I could do Monday.
Doing even.
Monday of Thanksgiving.
We're going to be up in Michigan.
Let me just see if I can get it lined up for that day. Are you not around?
I think that, no, it isn't, that's the weekend of the play. So no, Monday would, Monday would work fine for me.
Let me see if I can line up for that particular day.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Okay, any other old business? All right, any items for discussion? I wondered about our OSBA meeting.
The Capitol Conference coming up?
Do we have our, have we gotten booked yet?
No.
Actually, I do have some of that stuff upstairs in a room, so I need to bring it back down to you guys.
Okay, all right.
So hotel rooms have been reserved at the Crown, which is right across the street, connected by a walkway, enclosed walkway.
Do we say thank you? Thank you.
Thank you. I was shocked.
Yeah.
That was, that was difficult last year, taking the shuttle. I mean, it was, you waited forever, it was crowded, it was.
We had a nice tour of the city.
But to be right there, I mean, that is just, that's the best.
And we walked the first year quite a ways. We're just lucky we had nice weather. We walked a lot of blocks the first year.
So, yes, so, sure, I bring that back down before you guys depart. So, yeah, it's a booklet, lanyards, your name tag, all that stuff is up there. Sorry, now I have it.
That's okay. That's okay. That'll be Sunday, November 10th to Tuesday, the 12th. And you'll let us know what time we're leaving.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Just the three of us?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, any other discussion items? All right. Any unannounced guests? Jan, would you like to speak to us? No, okay.
Something, got to give us something.
Thank you. We do not have an executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn. So, move.
I second.
All right, Steph and Craig, all right. We'll adjourn this meeting until the next board meeting to be held on November 18th, 2019, at 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes. The motion carried five to zero. We are adjourned and it's only 6:20.
That's amazing.
This is now when we sing.